Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January tenth Planning Board meeting. It is shortly after seven. Present tonight, myself, Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman. We have Richard Clark, a member of the board, Dave Dergan, a member of the board, our town planner, William Scanlon, and Orifin, our clerk.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to make note of the fact we're being recorded?
I will do that right now. We are being recorded. If everybody wants to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. We have two meeting minutes to get to, December thirteenth and December eighteenth. I believe December eighteenth was the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
I've got copies here that Oras.
Well, we have to approve them first.
Okay, I'm sure we will. Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, excuse me. Richard, you weren't here on the eighth.
All right, I was going to wave on the thirteenth because I wasn't.
Okay.
So we have abstained.
Can't throw it out, that's right.
Well, then, we have a small issue because I wasn't here on the eighteenth, and if you weren't here on the thirteenth, we don't have a quorum to vote on either one, correct?
Oh, okay.
We'll wait and see if somebody else shows up later.
Yep.
And for the time being, those two will be tabled.
Exactly. All right.
All right.
Next item is in our plans, which we don't have any. Item number three, new business, reappointment of Ellen Laprise and Mark Mazzarati as members of the Economic Development Committee with a term to expire of six thirty two thousand twenty-five.
Chairman, I'd ask both Ellen and Mark to come tonight, and Mark emailed me at the last minute, said he couldn't make it. Helen said she would be able to attend, but she's not here at the moment. Would you like me to just explain what this is about, or would you like?
Yeah, please give us a little background, and if she shows up, we can maybe vote on it then.
Okay.
The board's a pleasure.
So the EDC is a volunteer board comprised of seven members. There's an EDC bylaw which governs their makeup. The bylaw states that two members are appointed by the Planning Board and five members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Helen and Mark are the two Planning Board representatives, and their terms have expired. And so the task tonight is for the Planning Board to consider reappointing them for a three-year term. I was a little bit lax in getting this to you when I should have at the beginning of the year, so we're behind. So this would be really a two-and-a-half-year term rather than a full three-year term. The bylaw states that they expire on June thirtieth after their three-year period is up and need to be reappointed.
Understood. And my understanding from meeting the correspondents is that both of them have excellent records of attendance and both are active members of the board, which is great and appreciated. It was a board's pleasure. Do we want to vote on this now, or do you want to wait a little while to see if anybody shows up?
I don't think her showing up is going to change my mind.
I think we might as well go forward with it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reappoint Ellen Laprise, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, and Mark Mazzarati as members of the Economic Development Committee. Committee or commission?
Committee.
Committee.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number four, discussion with Mark Cheeto about changing the name of Gene Street. Table that, or?
Uh, I can give you some background first. I thought Mr. Cheeto would be here tonight. Excuse me, one second. Hi, guy. Okay, okay, fine.
Good thing we're not on the radio. No data, date our time, right?
Okay. Good luck with that guy. Sorry. I'll let the board know. Okay, bye. That was Guy, who I'm the chairman. He had an emergency at his parents' house he has to deal with, so he won't be here tonight.
I wish him and his family all the best. Hope it's not a real emergency.
So we have in your packet, in your new business, a copy of the plan for Gene Street, which was approved by the Planning Board in nineteen sixty-eight. Currently, there are four, four-family buildings on these lots. Couple of the lots are vacant. Mr. Cheeto owns the development. These are rental units, and I believe he owns all the buildings and the road. And he came to me and asked, what's the process for changing the name of a private street? And I am providing you with Master of Laws, Chapter eighty-five, Section three B, entitled Changing Name of Way. And this essentially says, when a private way is up for renaming, the reason must be that it's identical with the name of another such way or of a public way in the same city or town or so similar thereto, as in the opinion of the Board of Survey, or if there is no such board, it's Board of Ultimate or Board of Selectmen, to lead to confusion after a public hearing thereon, of which notice shall be given, may by order change the name of either such way which has not become a public way. So the legislative intent here is that the Board of Selectmen are in charge of naming of ways, and there was a town bylaw which also specifies that, and that it would seem that there must be, or at least, some confusion as to the name of two or more streets in order to justify the renaming of a street.
Which is not the case here.
I don't know why Mr. Cheeto wanted to change the name. He didn't, you know, give me a reason. So.
Would appear that Mr. Cheeto was not here to explain that.
Not here, so your rule would just be to hear his case, I think, and if you thought that it wasn't justified, then so inform him, and he could then proceed to the selectmen if he wanted to, or. So anyway, he's not here, so I don't know.
Well, our agenda item says discussion with, and the with is not here, so I suspect that that's an item to be tabled at this point, if he.
Well, if this is the Board of Selectmen's responsibility, what's the purpose of us hearing it?
Yeah, I agree.
I guess just to hear his case, and you can make it, consider it, and whether you think it's justified or not, and so advise the selectmen.
So more than advisory role to the Board of Selectmen, then?
So you would have approved, the Planning Board would have approved the street name.
In nineteen sixty-eight.
The subdivision was approved, so. So, in any case, maybe we should wait for the next meeting for him to come.
As a citizen, I guess we owe him the courtesy of hearing him out in any event, anyway. If it referral to the Board of Selectmen for final decision, but again, courtesy is extended by this board to the citizen.
Yeah, if the board is agreement with that, I mean, it's a good point, just the courtesy aspect of it, and as Bill pointed out, in nineteen sixty-eight, the Planning Board did approve it, so in some way, shape, or form, I guess it does fall.
We are connected.
And, yeah, we're at least connected to it, I guess is a good way to put it, exactly. So with the board's approval, will it is table this one?
Yep.
All right. Item number five, request to release lot A thirteen on Bona Drive from the covenant Gregory Shinaki.
In that same tab section, just following that state law that I quoted, there's the request from the applicant to release lot A thirteen on Bona Drive. And he's not here this evening.
This meeting publicized that. Is it on the town website? It looks like.
So, you know, Bona Drive is the short cul-de-sac that was sort of put in after the main subdivision was approved. I'm not sure if this is the last lot, maybe there's one or two others, but I believe it's almost completed. Typically, the applicant, under the terms of the covenant, is required to pay three thousand dollars for lot release, which he has. And he's also, as provided on the next page, provided the certificate from the town treasurer that he's current with all fees and taxes. So again, it's up to the board whether you would like to act on this without the applicant here or invite him to the next meeting.
Question. Let me just think for a second. Requirements for work on the ground called, what was done there that was, what work was done there?
Well, there's, it's paved. I believe there's a base course there, a minor course. And we've released other lots there, given the condition of that street, so.
Oh, so the conditions have been met to release this as a buildable lot, or is, now I'm understanding, okay. And we don't have any kind of, anything from the engineers stating that it's, met the requirements? I mean.
I didn't, didn't ask, but I.
Believe we.
I'm assuming, I mean, I haven't checked the records. I think it's been done for quite a while.
Through the chair, I, we've had one of these not that long ago.
Yep.
I don't think we had recourse to engineering for the information pertaining to that last one either.
I've driven down there. It looks fine. I don't see any impediments to.
Well, I personally haven't been there for quite a while. That's just the reason for the question, yep. But I guess, why would the applicant give us, as if it wasn't ready anyway, right, so?
There isn't approved day in our lot for this particular lot, too.
There is.
There's an approved day in our plan, two thousand eighteen, I think.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, noting the last name of the applicant here, are we, do we have, we have one abstention, or?
I don't have to.
You don't have to abstain? Okay. I just wondered whether we had sufficient numbers to act on this if we chose to do so.
So, I mean, my question has always been, what's preventing this street from being brought forward for acceptance? The whole subdivision has been done for some time.
Yep, they're going to tear it up with the water line.
That's a whole other issue.
Yeah, that is another issue, but if it's not a public way, then the town has difficulty putting in a water main.
Exactly, I know.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Their final, their final end game was to bring in the water line down that loop. I don't know about this part, though. I don't think this part's affected yet.
This part wasn't in the red.
So, but, I mean, the applicant could have brought this forward for acceptance many years ago, and it never has. I don't understand. I know there's some kind of a legal dispute going on, which is sort of the rationale for not, not doing it, but it's, unfortunately, it's hurting, you know, the street is deteriorating, and it's preventing the water main from projects from going forward.
There's no, no discussion about a water main from the town.
They haven't talked to lawyers at all.
My lawyers are waiting. They're waiting. There's no discussion.
I mean, I think, I think that's, you know, from a planning perspective, and I'm not privy to any of those discussions, but it would seem if you have a bunch of homes with contaminated wells, and you can bring a water main down there, that would seem to be the solution, rather than putting it into treatment.
I, through the chair, if I may, I believe on the last Board of Selectmen's meeting that was mentioned, made of how there would be funding to, I think the wording was something to the effect from the town administrator, to deal with this once and for all, which the accommodation that's being made now is not seen as something that can be done in perpetuity. You have to have a solution, and the solution would be to provide public water, safe public water. That was, was brought up or discussed at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting.
So that obviously falls in the jurisdiction of the Water and Sewer Commission, whether.
It's going to involve them at the very least, I'm sure.
But for the purposes of item number five here on our new business agenda, the water main is really not relevant, right? It's more.
Yeah, that's not relevant.
We're meaning that the requirements have been met, and even though the applicant isn't here, there really isn't any reason not to address this, in my opinion. So if the board wants to make a motion, there's no more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we release lot A thirteen on Bona Drive per request of Mr. Gregory Shinaki.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstain.
And one abstention.
Richard, would you sign that original?
Okay, just need our six one hundred.
Item number six, request.
Excuse me, before we go on down, down below, there needs to be a notary. So one of the three members who are present tonight needs to have this notarized. Would one of you be available to do that?
Uh, that would be Laurie.
Could go to the town clerk.
I could do that when we get, I'll send it.
The town clerk, certainly.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, you know, able to do it. So would you take on that?
I'm sure. The office will be open tomorrow.
Yes.
Thursday, that should be okay.
Rural business hours.
Easy enough.
All right, now, after the notarization, it goes back to you, Bill?
Yes.
All right, now moving on to number six, request for reduction of cash security for Pier Pot Estates.
Somebody is here.
Somebody is here. Welcome back. We haven't seen you in a while.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was hoping to get you the, we should ask for it for today, but it came in this afternoon. So you have it in your packet. It's the next item after the lot release form. So the typical process is when an applicant wishes to have his security reduced so we can get cash back, we have our engineer, Jeff Walsh, inspect the site and determine the cost to complete the subdivision. And, you know, there's a very standard process for doing that. He looks at the plan, has units of various work items, factors in prevailing wages, and determines, you know, through a very detailed engineering process, what it would take if the town had to complete the road, given its current condition. And so Mr. Walsh has gone ahead and has done his usual very thorough job, and has provided a, you know, a nine-page letter with calculations for how we provide the discost. So he has determined that it would take about, you know, it would take, it would take eight thousand seven hundred dollars to complete the road if Mr. Segura walked away and the town had to, had to complete it. So Tony tonight is looking for a release of money, whatever he has in excess of eighty thousand seven hundred dollars. So the plan would be to keep this amount, which is all in cash with the town treasurer, and return to him the excess amount.
Do you want to know what the amount is that's being held right now?
I do not. It just came in later.
It's one eighty-two.
Have a chance to ask.
Pardon me?
One hundred eighty-two thousand.
One hundred eighty-two thousand? About a hundred thousand more.
You know, Tony's done a lot of work. He's completed that final phase. To my knowledge, he's had, you've had some paving done up there.
Yeah, all, all done.
So most of these are, you know, just, well, I mean, you can look through it. There's, there's still substantial work to be done, but it's really moving along nicely, and I think the plan would be to finish the road in the spring so that it could be, that it could come to town meeting for acceptance. And I've provided Tony the application form to bring it forward for acceptance. So I think this, this would be a rather short-term event between now and when the road gets accepted. Then the remainder of the funds would be returned to him.
So the request was made to the Planning Board. Do you know about what date, roughly? When the request, when the request for the release of funds was made to the Planning Board?
Tony talked to me last week.
Last week.
And I contacted Jeff, and he went out, I think, probably Friday before the snowstorm, and then took to today to compile this letter. So I got, got the letter this afternoon with the estimate.
Not that it has anything to do with this project, but it just happens a lot that we get documents last minute on the days of meetings, and the board has absolutely no time to, to review anything. And I think it's really excellent of Graves to, on almost short notice, to get out there and complete this. I think that was really good on their part.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask, has the applicant had a chance to look at this letter? This is presented on January tenth?
I did have.
You've seen the letter that we have from Graves dated today?
Yeah, I see, he sent me the same copy that he sent.
Okay, so you did see it.
The immaterially.
Tony has an extension to complete the project through June of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. But, you know, I think the goal would be to wrap it up this spring.
Yeah, it will be done before the, whatever needs to be done, will be done before the town meeting.
Does the board have any questions or any comments?
All the houses are up right now? All of your houses are up in?
I'm working on the last four houses.
Well, the pavement's in, the building's completed?
Sidewalks on the road is done paving. So we've got some minus type trees, some boundaries, one light pole, like a punch less, you know, that adds up to eighty thousand.
I would point out one thing. On page two of the letter, it's page two of three. One, two, three, the third bullet down says, a line item entitled Potential Road and curb cut repairs. Ten percent of the top course has been added to the three phases. This line item has been added to these phases to account for potential repairs required for the top course pavement. Graves was not contacted to inform us that the top course paving operations were being conducted, and the operations were not observed by a representative of Graves. So that's just in case there's, needs to be any sort of additional paving that might be necessary because, you know, Graves wasn't there to witness the work.
Do we keep that ten percent when the road's accepted, or?
Excuse me?
Do we keep that ten percent that he put aside in case the?
No, no, all the, all the remaining funds would be returned once the work has been approved by the town and accepted by town meeting. That is just for purposes of estimating, you know, should there be a need because of that oversight.
Any further questions?
What, again, if I may, is the amount that, reduction, the reduction amount again?
Going from one hundred eighty-two thousand down to the eighty thousand seven hundred?
Eighty thousand, so it's a hundred thousand approximately.
Yeah. Well.
This is something we've done a number of times, as I recall, so we're not exactly setting precedent here by.
No, but it's a standard.
Non-going process. So with that thought in mind, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant the request for reduction of cash security for Pier Pot Estates for the amount that you very correctly agreed a minute ago.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Of stick. All those against? None? Unanimous? Motion carried? Easy enough?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
I have to get out of this place. I was about insagible when I started that project. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for coming down and visiting us.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
One of the few on the agenda who made it, so.
All right, thanks.
So if I can just go off agenda real quick for a second. How, is there any way that we can rectify this? Because it's, I mean, one possible solution to the issue of getting everything last minute would be to require that any such request be made in front of the board at a meeting. Therefore, we'd all be aware of it, and then there would be at least two weeks' time in between to get this squared away. You know, I mean, it was very good of Graves to get out there so quickly and take care of this. I mean, hats off to them, but it kind of put us in a bind. We're all sitting here looking at paper that we've seen for the first time. And, I mean, quite frankly, I think next time, in my opinion, if this comes up, I'm just going to not, I'm just, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to put it off two weeks. Yeah, I'm going to put it off for two weeks. So is there any way that we can do that?
Well, I have sort of a policy that says I have to get information in the week before so that I can send it to you, usually on a Friday.
Yep.
So at least you have four or five days to look it over. Jeff said he'd get it to me quickly, you know, unfortunately, he came in at the last minute. So I understand sort of the difficulty of, there's a nine-page technical letter.
So the point I'm trying to make, though, is if, if this request would have been made in front of the board, we all would have been aware of it. We all would have had two weeks' time to get out there ourselves and take a look at it if we wanted to. I mean, granted, we all trust Graves, and they do a great job, but having our own eyes on it is also just.
Maybe you can catch something he missed or something, you know?
Or nothing else, just give us a warm fuzzy.
Right.
You know, so we can sit here and talk to the audience out there that, hey, we've been out there, we've seen it, we've done our due diligence. But, and so I just, I'd like to see some kind of change happen here, because I think the next time I get caught flat-footed, I'm just going to vote against it.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think, general consensus at the table here in terms of your feelings does create an awkward situation, so.
I mean, for little things, it's understood, but this is.
This is substantial.
Yeah, this is something we need to get right. All right. Thank you for listening to my rambling.
Well, thank you for rambling.
Next item number seven, review site plan approval decision for the Dudley Housing Authority Parking Improvement Project and possible vote to sign.
To the chair, Mr. Chairman, is this something that we would anticipate someone from the Dudley Housing? To the chair, Mr. Chairman, is this something that we would anticipate someone from the Dudley Housing Authority to be in attendance for?
No.
No.
The planning board approved the project, had a couple of conditions that have incorporated into this decision. So they're not here to, I mean, they wouldn't be here to argue any of the facts that you've already decided upon, so.
Well, given that I wasn't here for the meeting, there are a couple of facts that I thought this is all the arguing on. But if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't recall in my viewing the meeting reference to EV charging stations. The folks in Boston are hell-bent for leather to get everybody into an EV before the turn of the century. We have, as I understand it, only one public access EV charging location in the town of Dudley, and that is at the library. It seems that the housing authority might be an appropriate location for a second one, dare we say. What had been at Marty's is no longer there. So again, we are back to one. And I'm thinking in terms of the residents there, maybe I, maybe not the most mobile of folks. Searching around for an EV charging station some distance from the residents might be a challenge for some of those folks.
Yeah, point.
You know, they didn't propose one and the board did not ask for one.
I understand, and I, I again apologize by not being here last week. I may have raised the question for the last, the last meeting. But I think it's a question that, if not in this instance, that it's a question we need to start bringing before the public is, as again. The dictate is coming from Boston that this is gonna be. And somehow people have to be prepared for it, that we're, I think, deficient in terms of the town at this point providing options.
Is it possible? I don't know it offhand, Bill, I was wondering if you do know how many charging stations are required by, in our bylaws, I mean.
We don't have any.
We had a bylaw that we proposed, but it was defeated by town meeting, so there's no requirement.
Yeah, point well taken. I think that, my personal opinion is that, to your point, Boston wants it. It seems like the portions of the country want it. Dudley voters may or may not want it based on them rejecting the, the proposal. But it's, it should be brought up in discussion for, for projects like this, maybe moving forward. Not necessarily maybe all of us would be in agreement, but at least the point of discussion.
It's interesting that this is a state-funded project.
It's surprising the state hasn't brought that.
So they, they didn't ask for it either.
Well, well, I don't know if we maybe expect too much if we're asking for consistency out of Boston. I hope that finds its way into the minutes.
We'll do shipping containers and the other issue that was there.
Right, that's a condition that you would ask for. So I quoted that. Page three, section five, comma number one.
Page three, section five. Dimensions of these, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but the dimensions are, what, nine feet by twenty feet we have in our bylaws?
Yeah, yes, I think so.
I'm just thinking that maybe that might need to be visited as well. One of the more popular vehicles on the road is the Ford F-150, which I guess is keeping Ford in business. And as I understand it, the Ford F-150 can go up to two hundred thirty-one point seven inches in length and seventy-nine point nine inches in width. And then, far as the width is concerned, you've got probably another foot for a mirror on either side. And then, God forbid, somebody wants to open the door. What's left of your parking space or can you get in and out of that vehicle? Again, we're talking about folks who may in some cases have mobility issues. We're not designating these as, as handicap parking, as I understand it. And I don't know that we have a dimensional requirement for handicap parking spaces that varies at the nine and twenty.
It's a state mandated.
State mandated? And what is it, what's that dimension, do you know?
Well, there has to be an access aisle next to the parking space itself.
I think they're ten by nineteen plus the access, right? So they're a little bit wider than you have the six-foot access space on the side of the vehicle.
Okay. That, that, that is good then. But again, I think that, you know, if Ford continues to make F-150s and if they continue to grow at the rate they've been growing, nine by twenty is not gonna do it.
How would you, would you require all spaces to be larger or would you set aside a requirement that certain number be larger?
Could designate some as for compact vehicles and slightly lessed. And by shortening up or decreasing the width on those, create additional width and have truck-only parking. I mean, you see, you, you, you see public parking lots where guys shoehorn these things in there. And how they get out of them, I don't know. You know, if they go out the back window or, you know, finding their way under the hoods of, but it's, the things keep growing. I mean, historically, if you look at the size of a pickup truck back in the sixties versus what you're seeing on the road today, it's, it's like a tonka toy compared to an actual vehicle.
Right. I mean, we wanna try to decrease the amount of pavement because that increases stormwater runoff and has.
Well, we need to send a message to Detroit then in terms of, hey, make them smaller, guys.
So we have conflicting goals, which is unfortunate, but.
And that is, again, one of the more popular vehicles in terms of sales, annual sales. I think that's the only thing Ford really has is a number currently. It's future consideration and maybe, again, we have to go to the bylaws in terms of making that change. So we don't know how receptive the town will be to that.
And I believe Ford stopped making electric pickup trucks, right?
Yeah, they did, yeah. The Lightning.
No one's buying them. So we still have the idea of the item here on the, on the agenda. The two points that we spoke about and asked for at our meeting when we approved this have been addressed in the document. The other, other items are mostly standard, if I remember correctly, yep?
Yep.
So the board wanna take action on this now or?
Just for the sake of letting the board know, I would recuse myself. I was not part of that meeting. The issues I had obviously postdate the meeting, so they can't be dealt with, so.
Did you happen to see the meeting?
Yes, I did, but I don't, I again, didn't have participation in the meeting and that's the thing that I felt was missing, if you will.
I don't have a problem, but I'd like to see if Guy Horn has any more, like, chairman of the board.
Yeah, he was, he was the chairman. He was leading the, our charge, so the support's pleasure that we hold off until Guy's here, hopefully in two weeks.
Yes, well, we said for me.
Okay.
Okay, okay. You table it?
Charge of these conditions, is that the building inspector, like a special permit to make sure that they actually go through? You know, the conditions?
So, Quinn Engineering, who did the peer review, would be the outside inspector for the planning board in this case, since Grace is the applicant? There's also state inspectors who will be involved in this because it's a state-funded project. So it could be pretty good oversight and it's a rather, you know, minor activity anyway.
Next item number eight, begin the discussion of the short-term rental bylaw options. This is a spin-off from our meeting, Board of Select, with the Board of Selectman, correct?
Yes, so as you may recall, we had a discussion with Board of Selectmen about this. This issue, Jane Wirick from CMRPC attended, presented the results of her analysis and her, had a PowerPoint presentation outlining the key issues involved. And they have prepared two alternative bylaws, one's a general bylaw and one is a zoning bylaw. And the selectmen decided to refer the manager of the planning board. So it's on your, your docket to make a decision on what to do with this issue. So the options would be no bylaw, a general bylaw, or a zoning bylaw. The two, the two bylaws are very similar in nature in terms of the language. The primary differences are that the zoning bylaw would come into play if you felt that certain parts of town were more suitable than others for this kind of, uh, activity. Therefore, you would want to designate zoning districts where the issues might be allowed by right, where a special permit would be appropriate, or where they might be prohibited. So that would fall to the, the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, depending on which board became the public planning authority. The disadvantage of that approach is that any existing use is grandfathered, so they can continue to operate. They would still have to register with the town, but, you know, there'd be no oversight or approval of their, of their activity. If you felt that these uses would have sort of detrimental impacts on a neighborhood, such as noise or traffic or lighting or something, then you might want to have a, have a zoning process, like a site plan review, for example, or a special permit, whatever. You decided so that you'd have a plan submitted and those issues could be addressed. The general bylaw is more of a licensing process that falls under the Board of Selectmen. And there would, each applicant would have to apply for a license. Jewish departments, including Building Department, Board of Health, and Fire Department would conduct inspections of the property to make sure that is, everything is up to code. There would be application fees and the selectmen indicated that they would wanna have notification to a butters and a public hearing for each of these, uh, short-term rental operations before they were granted permit. And then there'd be an annual renewal process, similar to a liquor license or a used car license. So that if there were issues, that could be addressed the next time the license came up for renewal. So.
And that would be the zoning bylaw.
The general bylaw.
More of a general bylaw approach. If you want, I can go through this sort of section by section, or if you wanna just, you know, review it on your own and come back at the next meeting, we can do it that way. But basically, the text is very similar in both bylaws. It's only the matter of what the appropriate process is.
If I may, I don't recall, forgive me if I'm misremembering, as Roger Clemens would say. But I don't recall we're mentioning, notifying the butters was part of the, what was proposed or what was presented at the last meeting. Is that in there specifically and I missed it?
It is. Page, third page, can that number?
Send notification, okay, I see that in there. All right, very good, thank you. I did do a little checking on this and one of the questions that was raised by one of the selectmen was, is this gonna cost us more than we're gonna get out of it in terms of?
No.
Okay.
You charge a fee to cover your costs at least?
Actually, I found out that Province Town apparently has such in place as short terms. And obviously, their location, I think, makes it more likely that their number is greater than we'll see in Dudley. But they have a third party that takes care of that. I'm not sure what the contractual arrangements are, but they've taken themselves somewhat out of the picture and this third party apparently takes care of collecting and fees. Did check the town of Lexington has something very similar. It's a general bylaw. Town of Hopkin, Lexington approved theirs a hundred and sixty to six. Well, it was unanimous, pretty close, but Hopkinton rejected one. Must be afraid of all those marathoners showing up on the same day. I'm not sure what the thought was there. But that one went down. I saw there's not, there's some that have been approved and some that haven't been approved. So it's, it's not a, everybody behind the wagon here.
But I think the rationale is, you know, if you put yourself in the position of you wanna get an Airbnb for your vacation. And when you go to a place, you wanna be sure that it's safe and everything is, you know.
Certain, yeah.
Needs code. So if you think of it that way, then there's a justification for it.
Right.
Not to say that a homeowner would deliberately, you know, not take care of the property. But, you know, you certainly wanna be sure that, like, if the town is septic system, if the septic system in.
I think as I tried to make the point with the selectmen, a lot of the time that was that, you know, if, if you have the fees and you've had the approval by the town in terms of liability, I think that puts you in better standing than to say, oh, no, I don't have, never get any approvals, I never had any inspections, I never paid any fees. I'm not sure where you stand legally in that sense if something goes amiss. But having that behind you is, I think, a step forward in that regard. I would favor the general bylaw, frankly, and that puts it back on the table for the selectmen.
So if I understand the process correctly, is that we would be, we're being asked to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen may or may not act upon that recommendation. And then it would be, be called before town meeting, right?
The selectmen would have to sponsor the article, so if they didn't wanna, didn't sponsor it, then it wouldn't go forward.
And as a zoning bylaw, we're talking about, is the zoning supposed to be two-thirds majority?
Yes. And a general bylaw is fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
Plus one.
So my initial reaction is that we tabled an item or two to wait for our chairman to be here, give him a voice. I mean, he's been active on the board in town for, for decades. So I, I'm in favor, in any way, of trying to just table this, get his opinion as well, make it actually a unanimous board decision. If everybody's okay with that?
If you do decide to go forward, it's fairly simple to just sort of fill in the blanks.
It's all boilerplate.
These decision points, there's maybe half a dozen, a dozen of them you need to think about. But for the most part, it's, it would be easy to, to finish this up if you decide to go forward.
I personally, I mean, the language is the language. We've got experts that worry about that stuff, so I mean, I could really care less. My thing would be more, who would be the best entity to have the responsibility looking over this, first of all? And, and then the, the, the whole entire path to get it to approval, which, which, what option looks best. So again, if the board's okay, that we'll table this until Guy gets back and he hears his opinion as well?
Line with me, Mr. Chairman, if you can.
Moving on to standard business, discuss status report on finishing the construction of and acceptance of, uncompleted, unacceptable subdivision streets. Any input on our six line items?
Yes, we've already talked about Pier Ponte.
Yep. So just on Pier Ponte, the target is this summer, end of the summer, even though the approval lasts longer? Did I understand that correctly?
Well, we're targeting the spring to wrap that up.
Spring, okay.
So town meeting would be in May. So we'd have to finish off this list of items that Grace has identified.
Yep, okay.
Have it inspected by the town. We need a as-built plant prepared. And then there's a process whereby the selectmen refer the street acceptance request to the planning board, which is an advisory opinion. Then the selectmen hold a hearing on the matter, plans are filed with the town clerk. So there's a very strict process that needs to be filed, which you're familiar with. We've just, we did that with Piazza recently. So we would kick into gear for that process. At the same time, I think St. Anthony would go forward as well for acceptance. Town has made improvements there under a betterment agreement with, with the homeowners. So that street should be ready to go forward as well. So Rock Hill Estates, we talked about Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive. The sewer department is working on an estimate to repair the sewer pump station there. I'm hoping to have an estimate for you for the next meeting, also that we can decide to repair the pump station. And I, in my opinion, I think it's critical to get that to a point where the sewer department can accept it. So that if there's any failure, the sewer department goes down and fixes it. As a private station, there's this question, you know, who's gonna fix it should it fail, which to me is very scary if something should happen. So, so I think that should be the priority to, to get that fully built to standards.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to the planner, as far as Eisenhower being accepted, is there any way that you see this happening short of going through the betterment process?
I'm afraid that we don't have enough money to do both the sewer pump repairs and the survey work.
So effectively, the betterment process.
So I think, yeah, that's, the town can't spend money on private property.
So at some point, I don't know what the residents have in mind or what their thoughts are. I know there was an attempt to involve people from Toban Farms when that process was first thought to be a possibility. But I think at some point, we owe it to these people to try to get this thing done. people to try to get this thing done. And I don't know how many years this has been hanging on here, but this typhoon is wearing out. How do we address it?
The only other option would be if the developer recklessly came forward and said, okay, I'll do what you ask, but...
How many times have we been, you know, that road is a dead end, and I don't think anyone has any much, I have no hope that that's ever going to come to fruition, so...
It's a wild hope, but...
Yeah, it's an ultimate wild card, it's the Patriots in the Super Bowl this year. Not happening. So somewhere along the way, if this thing is ever going to pass muster and be accepted, I think we have to get some, some way of getting that ball rolling here, get the process at least up for discussion or consideration.
Understood.
Now, the Tobin Farms, the betterment process was approved. Is anything going forward on that?
Well, we're waiting actually on Graves to finish the scope of work, so that we can put it out to bid.
All right.
I'm not sure what the delay is, but it's taking longer than we thought it would.
Is that, would serve as a good example for the folks on Eisenhower, to see that something actually did happen.
Yeah.
We do have Partridge Hill we could refer to, I suppose, as well, but I think...
So my hope would be that, that would be ready for acceptance in the fall, if we can get the work done during the summer.
Good, thank you.
Lyons Estates...
That should be underwater by about now.
I saw Tom Rovain last week, he had been very sick, had been in the hospital for a while.
Oh.
He's out, obviously, and we know, was in, you know, getting permits, et cetera. So that may not be ready, I don't know if he can get it ready for acceptance in the spring or not, but I believe he's got all of the lots sold, and most of them under construction. And I think he kind of overextended himself, he took on more work than he could handle, because they sold very quickly, nobody wanted their house built right away. So I don't know if he'll make it, I think, you know, he's hoping to, but I, we'll just have to wait and see. For Sophie's Way, Steve Wettrowa came in today, and we talked about it, he was hoping to get the binder course down in the fall, but was not able to because he had issues with National Grid getting through their queue for doing the design of the electrical system there. So we talked today about, you know, so the normal process is you ask for a lot release after you put the binder course down, so you get released from the covenant. Under the subdivision control law, the applicant can propose something other than a covenant with a financial security. So his thought is, do what we did for Pierpont after Graves go out, do a cost estimate for what it would take to complete the road, he would put up cash in that amount, and the Planning Board could then release the lot and the subdivision, because you have the security. He's got a buyer who wants to start building right away, so that's sort of why he wanted to sort of do it this way, rather than the typical covenant way. So it seems to me to be a reasonable approach. Obviously, you know, we do that all the time, in terms of getting financial security for He's willing to put up cash, so we'd have, you don't have to worry about going through a bank or a mining company or something like that. So he wanted to know what your thought was on that, and if you were agreeable, then I would have Graves do the estimate. I believe he's got the sub base down, just on the clearing, you know, put in the sewer line, but he hasn't done any of the paving yet, so you essentially be asking to release a lot without the pavement, but you'd have the security to make sure the road gets completed.
Is the security going to cover the entire cost of what the town would have to pay if he just walked away?
Yeah.
It's a private road, and that was what his big deal was before.
Yeah.
Well, the binder had to be down before you can blow permit.
Yeah.
Well, for us to act upon this, we'd have to have that number.
Yes, yes.
Right now, we're just looking at a consensus, would we be willing to consider? Is that the question before us at this point?
Well, I mean, obviously, there's going to be a cost, have Graves go out and do the job, like, he wouldn't have to pay for it, so...
But again, the devil's in the details here.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not a big cost, because he's done all the sub base work.
I don't know, I think I'd like to see a number.
Yeah, of course, of course, but I'm just saying, it's not going to be a big number like Pierpont Estates.
Not a crazy number, but a number nonetheless.
Yeah. I mean, it's sort of, the applicant does have the choice of what form of security, as long as it's one of the four types allowed by law, then he, the board doesn't have the ability to say, no, you can't, you can't do it, but, so that's sort of the thought at this point in time, to allow this buyer to start work immediately, and I guess he's very anxious to get work going on the lot.
So in theory, if the binder course was down already, then all catch basins and stormwater would be squared away?
Well, there is no stormwater.
That's my, that's how I'm going. But in a typical situation, all the stormwater system would be in place, and then you, that would cut down an erosion, because you've got the asphalt surface, and you've got places for the water to go. And here, where there is no stormwater system per se, where the swales, that where the water's supposed to be directed to, the water's not going to get there, because it doesn't have a smooth surface, it's going to basically go down into the crushed stone. So I don't have an issue with potentially releasing this without the binder course, but I would like to hear Graves' input on if any kind of stormwater event will, or it will affect anything out there.
I believe on Bonner, too, they want to release the house lot until the binder was done.
So do we want to just take a vote to see if we're amenable to this, or just want to voice opinions, or how?
I guess, I'm just looking for directions, so I, what I'm hearing is that I will contact Graves and come back to you with his report.
Are the two members okay with releasing Graves, as long as they're talking with the, or they're taking into consideration stormwater?
It's all Steve's dime, I don't care. The town's not paying for it.
The town's not paying for it, I'm good with that.
Okay. Next item, inspections and actions associated with site plans?
I don't have any updates on these items.
All right. Planners' plea.
A couple of things, the last meeting, we reviewed the situation on Old South Beach Road with the common driveway, and you directed the applicant to prepare a common driveway plan and come back. So I did get the plan yesterday, so obviously, it didn't come in in time to put it on the agenda, so I'll put it on the agenda for next week, I'll send it out to you so you can review the plan that came in, that's in accordance with, you know, the general discussion that you had at the last meeting.
Well, Dan mentioned something, that's a zoning board has to approve that before it comes to us, on that five lot common driveway.
Well, actually, the Planning Board doesn't have a formal role in it at all, it's just a matter of...
Yeah, so it was a zoning board.
The zoning board just asked for their opinion on it.
Yep.
Because it made it sound like we were going to approve that.
You said the merger board opinion, I have a very definite opinion on this whole thing. We're talking a common driveway for four lots, is that it? Five lots?
Five.
Five lots. Why don't we make it a hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah, exactly.
Why stop at five? I mean, why do we have rules and regulations which say that people have to build a road, if you will, to certain dimensional requirements?
Yeah.
Take care of stormwater issues, and throw that all out, and let's just have common driveways all over the place? And then in twenty years, it'll look like the private roads in Worcester. You know, everybody, you know, this whole thing is just a slippery slope. We need a bylaw to deal with this, because again, why stop at five? Let's make it a hundred and fifty-five.
The zoning board can say, no, we don't want to.
Well, they can, but...
Well, it would be setting the pretense.
The problem is, the only place, if you look at the zoning bylaws, and you look at our rules and regulations, it's common driveway, it only shows up, there's a few words in the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they have the right to refuse or not. But I think the intent there was looking at something maybe two or three at most. This is five, again, with a limit that is nowhere. It's kind of absurd, when you get to think about it, how long is a driveway? How long can you make a common driveway? Let's see, what's the world record? Somebody check with Guinness. We'll go for the record. Let's give it a shot. You know, and these kids, one of the issues was in terms of their safety, being picked up, if this is a road that is accepted, is a public way, the bus will come to them. This kid isn't going to have to walk a hundred and twenty-four lots down to a common point to be picked up by a bus.
Well, Richard, you know, you're making...
The Wild West, I think is Mr. Wettrowa's feeling, and I think it's beyond Wild West, it's crazy.
So, I mean, you're making an argument on one side of the matter, and it's up to the board to decide whether they want to take that position, and they could so state that to the CBA, or they could take the other approach and say, you know, this is a reasonable solution to this situation, and say...
Regardless of what we say, the Zoning Board of Appeals is the determinant.
That's correct, yes.
I think that's kind of what Dan said, when I want to rewatch that meeting, well, that should go to the zoning board.
But at some point, I think we have to, we, I think, I would like to see us, if I may, I would like to see us revisit the issue in terms of a, an amendment, zoning, change of the zoning bylaws. I know that didn't work the last time, because we were fringing on people's individual rights to shoot raccoons in their backyard or whatever, but I think it's something that needs another look.
Yeah, I've got to say, my memory isn't what it used to be, getting too old, and whenever that was brought before us, this common driveway last time, somehow I missed the fact, or don't remember the fact, or remembered incorrectly, that we had driveways that were going basically vertical, straight vertical. I was, I was surprised, in a way, that it got the unanimous vote from us, and I'm agreeing with, with Richard there, it's, how many, how many driveways, how long, how many houses serve, is too many? Why, if it's serving a certain number, be it four, five, or whatever, if it has a certain length, it basically is a road, there should be requirements that be met, be met for, it doesn't matter if it's stormwater, or for slope, or whatever else. Just the idea that on a driveway that steep, that you've got only fifty feet that are at a halfway decent slope, and everything else is straight uphill, is just, I don't know, I mean, everything's selling as far as properties right now, I mean, this is excellent seller's market, but people are going to be, who are going to buy these places or buy similar places in five or ten years with washed-out driveways, or all kinds of sediment in the middle of the road, there's going to be issues.
Well, I think, you know, when you look at the plan, you can determine whether it's designed properly, whether you think the runoff would be adequately controlled, whether there'd be safe access, and so you can look at those factors and then say, you think this is a good plan or not.
But I mean, my understanding of this, first of all, is that we have bylaws that anybody can fall back on, and if our opinions are different than what's shown in the bylaws or whatever else, then we're kind of screwed, and that if we don't really have the, this is not really our area of jurisdiction here, that we have a different board who's associated with it. So to Mr. Clark's point, whenever this plan comes in, I wouldn't mind having it as an item on our agenda, that way at least we can get our opinions on the record and have them passed over to the zoning board, and for them to act on it how they want, but it just, this really is a slippery slope, I mean, it's obviously in the developers' favor to extend that driveway forever, to get as many houses as possible, but I don't think it's in the best interest of anybody who's going to live there in the future, which is, especially with the F-150s getting wider. It's just going to cause trouble.
Well, start F-150s are the cause of everything, everybody's problem.
So, you know, I'll send you the plan for the next meeting, put it on the agenda, invite the applicant in, and then we can go from there. The other item that I wanted to mention was the Airport Road, Dudley Hill Road, Tanyard Road intersection. The Board of Selectmen will be having a public meeting on the plan to renovate that, that intersection. It's on their next meeting, which is January twenty-second. I'm not sure of the time yet, I haven't seen the agenda. But Ty and Von has been working on the design, so I wanted the board to be aware that this plan is coming forward, it's a public meeting, so anybody can attend. We're not billing this as a joint meeting, but you can certainly come, and I'll send you the plan when I get it, so you can look at it, see if you have any comments. Essentially, the plan involves making Tanyard Road a dead-end cul-de-sac near that intersection, so you can come down from Dudley Center and then turn around and go back up, which you couldn't go through anymore, which eliminates one of the legs of that hazardous intersection. There's realigning of the way the road, the two, all the roads come in together, putting in crosswalks and safety measures to get to the golf course parking area, reducing the width of the parking, golf course parking area driveway, and other safety features to make it more, more safe for cars and for pedestrians.
Mr. Chairman, just if I may speak to that just a bit, living as close as I do to it, probably there not every day, then almost every day, a concern that I've had right along, and I've tried to make it known to everyone that'll listen with an earshot, is in the spring and in the fall, you have kids from Shepherd Hill running as a group down that road, Dudley Hill Road, and they come around that corner, and there's just the grassed area in front of the golf course, there's no sidewalk, there's no way for them to get out of the road, and they don't choose to try to even get out of the road, quite frankly. But I think there needs to be a sidewalk of some sort coming around that bend, so that, most of my neighbors are savvy enough that they don't walk on Airport Road, but should one of them make a mistake someday, at least give them someplace they can go, when somebody doesn't bother with the stop signs and the dangerous intersection signs, which nobody understands and pays any attention to anyway. But there needs to be something there. I mean, these kids come down in good numbers, the cross-country teams, both boys and girls, some of them are very young kids. I'm not sure how conscious they are in terms of traffic situation, or the intersections they're coming into, but giving them some opportunity to duck and dive, I think is incumbent upon the town and anybody in a position of responsibility. We've been fortunate, thank you very much, and I don't want to be the guy that has to come in here someday and say, well, good fortune has run out, and now we have a problem, and the red lights and blue lights are the only way to solve it.
Well, this was a grant, right?
Yes.
Like, two years ago now?
Yeah.
Been a while.
It has been.
Rotary there.
What's that?
Rotary.
Well, that was one lot that was kicked around, I don't know where that went to, that died?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Probably don't have much room for it, really.
Well, who knows, what you could do with that.
Anything else in the Planners' plea?
No.
All right, comments for the Planning Board?
Just to reiterate, if, again, Mr. Chairman, in regards to, I think we need a zoning bylaw with regards to this driveway issue, and I just spoke at length in regards to the intersection of Airport Road, make mention of the fact that the CMRPC quarterly meeting is tomorrow evening, and the topic for discussion is reducing climate pollution in Southern Worcester County, which probably connects somehow to these electric vehicles that we don't have any place to charge. I did send out, or tried to send out, hopefully people were able to get it, a list of different grants that the CMRPC identified. I had been, I sent an email to someone at CMRPC with some questions regards to one of them being applicable to the no-fun zone over here, which is embarrassment, I mean, how else could we describe that? I mean, we're right here at Town Hall, you look out the window and you get caution tape telling you you can't go into a playground. I mean, if that's not an embarrassment, I don't know what the town fathers or the town people are thinking of, but it is there, and it's been there for some time, and apparently nothing's going on, moving that forward. So I don't know what the response will be to that, but I would encourage anyone and everyone to take a look at that laundry list of grant possibilities, and if you think anything is a possibility, then let's go after it, because unless we get some free money somewhere, that thing is going nowhere, and there has to come with some accountability for that. There's also the newsletter from the CMRPC, if anybody's interested in that, there's a whole host of things, quite a laundry list, I'd be happy to forward that to anyone, or I could do that, I'll send that out as a blanket later on. Anyone have any thoughts in terms of reducing pollution in Southern Worcester County, going into the meeting tomorrow?
They have a term, what is climate pollution?
I don't know, that's a good question. I think it's all-inclusive, you know, whatever comes out of your tailpipe, whatever, you know, if you're using a gas clothes dryer, they're going to shut you down.
Okay.
You know, if your refrigerator is on propane tank, you're going to be handcuffed or something, with a whole laundry list, I suspect.
More's.
One of the things that I've asked, and haven't really got too deep into this, is there are, you know, talking about pollution, and one of the thoughts there, obviously, is clean energy. Well, the town of Dudley has a number of dams. Why are some of those dams there? They're there because they were producing a certain amount of power, hydro power, and other communities have done something with some, looking at a couple of them in Rhode Island specifically. And I don't know, the condition of those dams varies, and so... and some of them are in pretty bad shape as I understand it. But is there any opportunity to do something with them? There's something called an Archimedes Screw that is being employed in the town of Alpiot in Rhode Island. And they've managed to take a dam that was a mill dam and have been able to put a couple of these things in, and I believe some fish ladders, so the environmentalists are happy, and they're generating electricity.
Yeah, I've seen the same thing in Upstate New York. These private dams.
So, yeah, but, you know, what are we doing here? The Stevens thought was they were going to do something with that. I thought they had some indication of maybe doing something with some of the water channeled through the, from the river at some point.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Oh, I thought, well, my misremembering again.
I couldn't have remembered either.
You know, as a resource, I think it's something that's overlooked. You know, I've had an affiliation with Samuel Slater Museum over here in Webster. Why did he come here? Water power. Is it, did it all of a sudden dry up and no longer here? Not so.
Most of the New England towns have been built around those rivers.
Right, around rivers.
The town owns those old Stevens Mill dams.
Okay.
Those are town owned.
Okay.
So the town is responsible for them and they have to maintain them.
Right.
For example, the town has a grant to remove Carpenter Pond Dam. But something like Marino Pond or Peter Pond, I don't, don't see those dams being removed.
I, I don't know what we're taking towards, you need obviously an engineering study to see the, you know, what's the feasibility of doing something with these. Because if they're 19th century dams, you know, the whole situation is somewhat in flux. But there's, there's some thought there. I, I did note, we didn't have the economic development folks with us this evening. And I know they're working on this gateway project. But, and looking at a couple of their meetings, I don't recall them looking at the three things we have displayed in the lobby as we come in the building as part of that gateway project. Maybe you have.
Well, that's on its own track.
It's, that's a separate track?
The fun zone.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, here's, here's the problem. The, the crux of the whole problem is, in the survey that they want to put out, one of the questions they have is funding. And funding is at the heart of all these things. It's the no fund zone, it's the gateway project, it's those three options down there in terms of this property around this building. Money, money, money. You know, follow the money, but we don't have any money to follow. And unless and until, oh, these are great ideas, all of them. But until somebody has a check that they could put on the table, they're not going anywhere. You know, and that's, that's, I don't know where that thought needs to go.
So the plan for the, the fun zone park here is, you know, the Women's Club did a fundraising campaign.
Right, hats off to them, commendable.
So we're going to use that money to do a final design for that park, which we need in order to apply for grants. So the ultimate goal is to apply for grants in order to, you know, rehab that park and then get it to that community.
Seriously, wouldn't it be wonderful if the town could say, we've got the money for that. We don't have to go out and, you know, apply for a grant and get in line with 1,522 other communities and, and hope that a few crumbs fall off the table.
Sure.
Well, Mr. Durgan moves to the Board of Selectmen. We'll, we'll have all those funds and that's all. I just wrote your campaign speech for you.
You'll have more than that.
Can I bring us back to the agenda? Thank you, guys. Any comments, any more comments on the board? With exception, Mr. Clark?
No, how about the audience?
All right, any from the audience? Other business, next regular meeting is January 24th, 7 o'clock, same time, same channel. We have a voucher to approve. 102.90.
It's in the back at, under invoice, the invoices tab sort of towards the back.
So I can accept a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay the invoice from Stonebridge Press the amount of $102.90.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Other town notices and a conflict of interest training.
So I, I believe I sent this to a page following that invoice. There's an email from the town clerk saying that, you know, all town staff and board members are required to complete the conflict of interest training. So the state has a new system where you go online to complete the training. The way it works is you have to do the full training every other year. And then there's, on the odd years, there's a, a very simple process of logging into the system and looking at the summary of the conflict of interest law and signing or, you know, clicking that you're acknowledging you have read that summary. So as I understand it, last year, the board all took the training, the, the long version of the training.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't have to do that this year. But you do have to go on and do the summary of the conflict that you, acknowledging that you have read the summary of the conflict of interest law.
Can I take this with me?
Sure. And then you don't have to do anything else. The town clerk gets notice through the system directly. So you don't have to print anything out and bring it down. I, you know, I did look today for, and I did contact Lori and, and said, you know, if you could give me a little more information about how they do that. And so there's the website here, in case you forgot what the website is. I'm not going to let you have that excuse. So you, it's called Skillburst and it's under the Mass Efforts site. So you click on that, that brings you to a sign-in page. You should have, your username should be your Town of Dudley email. Unless when you signed on, you might have used your personal email, but I would try the town email first. And then she's given you the password here, which you would then plug into the password line. If that doesn't work for whatever reason, you can reset your password. I'm sure you are familiar with how that works on other apps that you've been on to. And then when you log in, you'll see two, two pictures. One is, I'll have a date on it when you took the complete training. And then you'll have the other one which says the acknowledgement. So you would click on the acknowledgement thing, which then gets you into that system. So it's pretty straightforward. You have an easy task this year to, to do it. So it shouldn't take you very long.
Where's the deadline on this?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I think she sent it into original email, but I don't see it.
I didn't see a date.
I think it's early February. I think you have about 30 days or something like that.
I thought this was for two years though.
The full, the full training is for two years. So you don't have to do that again. On the odd years, you have to do this simple step. Just reading the summary.
Okay, so those are, that's our town notice conflict of interest. I, I think there's one other thing that we might take note of, Mr. Chairman, is the FAA and the Board of Selectmen will start meetings in February to discuss budgets, which means department budgets and the planning is a department. The first meeting is on February 5th. The second will be Thursday, February 8th. I'm not sure who's up on those dates, whether the planning is the 5th or the 8th.
I'm sure that will be announced at some point.
Should be on the agenda for those meetings, which hopefully will be on the town website. But as you might recall, the planning budget at one point last year, I use the word disappeared, or nearly disappeared. It came pretty close to disappearing. Let's try that. So if any of us have an inclination to keep planning as a function in town, showing up on whatever date that happens to be might be a, a good thought. Hopefully, there'll be some chance for, opportunity for input.
All right, any other correspondence that we have?
No.
We're good to go.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.